And we're recording, so I'll call to order the District of Clearwater Regular Council Meeting for Tuesday, April 6, 2021 at 2:00 PM. Are there any late items to add to the agenda? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda? Moved by Counselor Taylor, seconded by Counselor Herring, all those in favor. Moving to ministerial order, there's a recommendation that pursuant to Ministerial Order Number M192, the District of Clearwater is excluding in-person public attendance at this April 6, 2021 Regular Council Meeting on the basis that the full public attendance in a manner consistent with public health orders and recommendations cannot be accommodated at this time. And the District is ensuring openness, transparency, accessibility, and accountability at this meeting by the following means. This meeting is being recorded. A video of this meeting will be available on the District's website for viewing at an on-demand basis. All favor of this recommendation or? Okay, there we go. I don't know if I move it second that it's just, it comes up as a recommendation but not a voteable one, I guess. Okay, so moved by Counselor Taylor, Counselor Herring, and all in favor. Okay, thank you. Adoption of the minutes, are there any errors and omissions? Seeing none, move her to second or two. By Counselor Frizzle, seconded by Counselor Herring, all those in favor. Hey, there we go. Unfinished business, Wellsbury Veterinary Recruitment Coalition. There's a recommendation. What are people's thoughts? So there's Counselor Taylor, yeah.
I mean, I'd be happy to move this recommendation. You know, it's not quite up there without doctor recruiting, but I think it's super important to this community that we have a vet in place. And, you know, I agree with the recommendation of taking the money from the professional recruitment budget because I think we have intended to have that as a broader professional recruitment. And I do feel this fits well under that. And, you know, it's certainly beneficial for us to have this group, this coalition moving this forward for the community.
Good point. Just remember to use your mics because I just forgot to use my mic and as we're going to be recorded and out to people in the universe there. So any no further comments? All those in favor? Okay, and that passes. There's a report for cell one upgrade project open house. It's just a reminder that it'll be April 19 via Zoom. And, how is that?
Part of that is we will be sending out a letter to all the households.
Okay.
Strawberry plots, so that they know that this is what the password to listen.
Yeah, so this, this, yeah, in the neighborhood of strawberry, all households of the strawberry plots regardless, not just the ones close to the air. Excellent, thank you, that's good to know. So this is for septic drying beds. For those interested out there in the recorded and live public. Okay, moving on to public, oh, questions, sorry. Oh, the dog park. Yeah, yeah. Oh, you mean the thing you're talking about, which the same night for the, for the thing, we may be talking about four options for a dog park in Clearwater or different locations. Okay, that's the thing you're talking about, okay. Okay, moving on to item seven, public and statutory hearings. Now I get to read the lovely long statement here because we have one tonight. So, opening statement for public hearings. The public hearing is being convened under the provisions of the British Columbia Local Government Act to hear submissions related to zoning amendment bylaw number 248-2021. Bylaw number 248 would rezone attractive land abutting Camp Two Road legally described as lot A, District Lot 1725 KD YD Plan KAP 91502. This is the public's opportunity to make representations to council. All persons present who believe that their interest in the property is affected by their proposed bylaw shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard. I would ask those members of the public who wish to speak to commence your address to the council with typing your name in the chat box. And when, and then when you speak clearly, state your name. The main function of this public hearing is to listen to your views. Council will not debate the matter of the proposed bylaw with individual citizens, but members of council may ask questions of you following your presentation. No one will be or should feel discouraged or prevented from making their views heard. Your only opportunity to comment on this proposed bylaw is during the public hearing as members of council may not receive further submissions verbal or in writing after the close of the public hearing. This is a reminder to councils, put away your cellphone to ensure no further information is being received. Now I'll ask the corporate officer to confer publication notice of the public hearing as required by legislation if there is any written submissions for consideration.
So no written submissions have been received. We have had a couple from the public that came and looked at the packet.
So, that's that. So I call for a first time, is there anyone online who wishes to make a presentation to council? Okay, so Alex, oh, Alex is online there. Okay, so we might as well have Alex present before we really start that.
Hey, Alex. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just bring up the PowerPoint slides. I think Michael was going to bring that up for us here. Okay.
I've got you up there on the screen.
Perfect. So I'll just give a brief overview presentation before members of the public provide their input. But this is a proposed site-specific rezoning to allow the re-establishment of the old racetrack up along Camp Two Road. So next slide, please. And the property is very large, it's over 500 acres, and only a portion of it is subject to this site-specific rezoning. And the property does abut along the municipal boundary and includes a portion that's also in the ALR. But the portion that's being rezoned is outside of the ALR and we'll zoom into that in a moment. So next slide, please. The land has dual designations in the official community plan. It's designated rural resource and a portion designated industrial. And it's within that industrial designation that this proposed site-specific rezoning is occurring. And it is the appropriate designation, so it doesn't require an official community plan amendment in this case. Next slide, please. So again, it is a site-specific rezoning to the I2. So the property zone currently has dual zoning, RL1 rural and I2 light industrial. And it is a site-specific amendment specifically in the I2 zone to allow racetrack use. And the proposed zoning amendment will allow or will add a definition to the zoning bylaw of racetrack. And we could click to the next slide, please. So this is the new definition that's proposed in the bylaw that would apply to this property and this property only. The key factor here is that it does not include traveler accommodation use, campground, or permanent retail stores. So any sort of, say, accommodation, traveler accommodation, like a hotel or motel or some additional use would require a separate rezoning. This is simply for the use of the racetrack for racing cars, other vehicles with related bleachers, spectator stands, and some refreshment booths, food concessions, and accessory structures or accessory uses to that. Next slide, please. So here we see an aerial image. And again, we can see the existing oval. And they're not developing new land. The proponent is simply using an existing oval that's already on site, which we can see better on the next slide. Where we zoom in and there's an existing largely abandoned racetrack that was there previously. And the site hasn't been used for about 15 years for formal racing. And the proponent, Merit Stock Car Association, is looking to remove some of the trees and brush and basically re-establish the existing racetrack. Next slide, please. Shows us some photos provided by the applicant. And maybe we'll click one more, please. So for the first season, seeding is, will be by lawn chair or tailgate and then stands may be added in the future. The proponent anticipates potentially having crowds of up to 150 people one day. Of course, not during COVID, but if those restrictions are lifted, that's sort of the, the goal of the proponent this time. Washrooms will be provided by rented porta-potties. So there'll be no permanent restroom or permanent structures on the property at this time. And the accessory uses will include things like food trucks, concessions that would be brought onto the property for race events and then removed from the property on non-race days or race times. Last slide, please. So here we see a proposed layout and the applicant has been in contact with the fire chief. So there is one main entry into the spectator parking area. In discussions with the fire chief, they did identify two additional access points that can be used for emergency purposes, certainly. And overall, this is a land use re-establishment rather than a brand-new use, but it does have to go through the full rezoning process. Given the location, past racetrack history, Planning Services does not anticipate land use conflict and it is generally supported by OCP policy. So after public hearing input today, staff are recommending that council consider reading the bylaw a third time and adopting the zoning amendment. So I will leave it there and answer any questions as they may arise. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Alex? Counselor Sim. Yeah. Sorry. So is there overnight camping allowed under this zone here? Or parking for campers, trailers, participants on race weekends? What is that box, Taylor?
We can't hear the question, unfortunately.
My question is.
Can you hear it now?
Can you hear me now? Alex?
Something's gone wrong here. We're frozen. Can you type in the chat box there, Alex? If you can hear us at this end or if the whole thing is just frozen.
Dale, can you hear me?
Interesting.
No, so the zoning would not include the campground use. So if the, if the proponent wanted to have people remain there over the weekend or over a course of the time, then they would need to have an amendment to the zoning that does not include a campground.
Okay, but according to the diagram that was up there, campers and trailers are allowed, but that's for a day use at this point in time.
Yeah, and I think what the proponent meant with that diagram is they were showing that campers will come with their vehicles instead of giving it. Like they weren't going to set up a formal campground.
Okay, just for, just for citizens who may be asking, it wasn't very clear to me, so thank you for that clarification.
Apparently we have a dental drill on that thing as well, so. Anyways, further questions, Mr. Crowe?
Dale, I think we're picking up background noise for me. One, again, thank you.
Anyways, if there's no further questions, I'll start the process again. Calling for a first time, is there anyone online who wishes to make a presentation to council? Calling for a second time, is there anyone online or at the comment box wishing to make a presentation to council? And calling for a third and final time, is there anyone in the online? Anyone online or in the chat wishing to make a presentation to council? There being no further speakers to declare this public hearing closed, thank you. And then we move back to the regular agenda.
Good move, bylaw number 17.
We could do that right now, so, yeah, we could. Sorry, where is that in the regular agenda?
It's number 17.
Seventeen, so.
Page one or page 83.
So if we, if we want to, we can just move straight up to that. So let's do that, get that over with and then the people that are online and go on with the rest of the day. So we have bylaw number 248-2, 2021 zoning amendment. Application number RZ2101. There is a recommendation, what is the will of council? Give me a second because I have to find it. To read it if we get to that point.
I'd like to move that recommendation.
Okay.
A second.
Okay. Further discussion? So, reading this bylaw for the third time? Third time. District of Clearwater, bylaw number 248-2021, a bylaw to amend the District of Clearwater zoning bylaw number 133. Whereas an application number RZ-21-01 for amendment to zoning bylaw number 133 has been made and whereas the desired changes in the uses of land have been considered and whereas zoning amendments conform to the District of Clearwater official community plan. Now therefore, council of the District of Clearwater in an open meeting assembles and access follows. This bylaw may be cited as District of Clearwater zoning bylaw number 133, amendment bylaw number 248-2021. All those in favor? And that passes. And, read to be adopted. Move her to second for that. Seconded by, moved by Counselor Taylor, seconded by Counselor Frizzle. District of Clearwater, bylaw number 248-2021, a bylaw to amend the District of Clearwater zoning bylaw number 133. Whereas an application number RZ21-01 for amendment to zoning bylaw number 133 has been made and whereas the desired changes in uses of land have been considered and whereas the zoning amendment conforms to the District of Clearwater community plan. Now therefore, council of the District of Clearwater in an open meeting assembles and access follows. This bylaw may be cited as District of Clearwater zoning bylaw number 133, amendment bylaw number 248-2021. All those in favor? And that passes. Thank you. Dale, you're free. Thank you, Alex. Have a good day.
Can't wait for the first one.
I'm quite sure that you're going to get the news out there on Facebook pretty quick there, Alex. Saw the tire pile, so, or sorry, Dale. Saw the tire pile this morning on Facebook, so it's all good.
I've got a press release ready to go, so thank you very much, Mayor and Council.
Yeah, have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay, so let me get reorganized here for a second. Okay, so we have no further presentations, no delegations. Mayor's report. T and R D, lots of things going on, but most of my time on the official table has been dealing with the Jenny setting and things like that, has been dealing with hiring processes and staffing issues, so we'll have more on that hopefully in the future. Council reports, Counselor Bamford is away at work, Counselor Frizzle. Technical issues.
So I've attended several Zoom meetings. Our, for the Silga Speaker Series that started on in February, but in March, we had a meeting with Connectivity, which is really interesting. There's lots of discussion and the people that were on were basically going to Canada and stopped there. So that didn't happen. So, March 10, Interior Health talked about their two crises that they're dealing with right now, which is COVID-19 and the opioid crisis. On the 17th, TRU is thinking beyond COVID and they have a researcher in residence. It sounds like a very exciting program that they're on. The 24th is probably the most interesting speaker that we had with a fellow on Perpetual Pivot and How to Adapt to Chaos and by adapting, reinventing, and anticipating what's coming next. And we had Ravi Kail on last week, Kailan Kail. And he mentioned Mayor Blackwell and Clearwater, so that was very cool. So, yeah, it's been a very interesting few weeks of listening to these speakers come on and I've learned a lot from them, so it's been really good.
Counselor Herring.
Um, not much to update for myself, but just wanted to comment on how many new names and faces I've seen on the info board and just around town in general. It is crazy how many people are moving to town. We are definitely growing and my understanding is the survey results reflect some of those changes, which I'm, I'll be excited to see when we get the, the final tally. But other than that, no update.
Thank you. Counselor McKenzie is off playing with trains in the official work capacity of playing with trains. So we'll just move on to Counselor Sim.
Thank you. First of all, it's been a year for council with COVID. And I just want to take this moment to thank each and every one of you, the whole team, for digging in, doing some hard things, and being a really great team and bringing all your strengths to the table and your whole health, whole selves. It was a terrible year for each of us in our own ways, likely. For me, it was an awful one. And I learned a lot from each of you and I want to just thank you very much for your kindness and your grace and for the fact that we can disagree with the best community heart at mind. And I think that that is a wonderful strength. And I, I just, I just want to thank you for just having run and to be here. I'm just immensely proud and just grateful how much I've learned from all of you. So thank you, that's my first. Staff, that goes to you too, just to let you know, we're just all in this together and we're just great and I think our, our community reflects it. Uh, next is, I was asked by the coordinator for the Wilderness Relay to express her sorrow that the Wilderness Relay will not be happening this year.
Is that Juanita?
Juanita, yeah. And she wanted to also express her gratitude to council for supporting it with the financials and she hopes that to be brought again. But it was a great event and just another COVID casualty for that. People have been asking about the burn piles on the old Canfor lands. And I don't know if that's been addressed or anything, but there's been some concerns just around what happens next. Is there that opportunity to, you know, salvage it for any firewood? I don't know where we're at with that.
So I have been in contact with the owner and his representative in Clearwater. And they are, one of our staff members went and looked at it with Max Gunster to see if it would be something that they could salvage. It's, it's not a mix that he can get into without lots of expense because it's all dirt and that sort of stuff. So the fire chief is also dealing with it because we do not want to see it being for that closer community. So we're hoping that Domtar will be interested in it. It's, it's private property, so we can only suggest and advocate.
Yeah, and is there, is there room since it's private property that they could do anything for firewood? Just noting our previous conversations, it's part of our pollution is based on green and of that. So anyway, I bring this forward just for inquiry. And the next is on the heels of Counselor Herring's comments about lots of new people. I'm super excited to spend the money in our swag budget. I think it's time for vests. Nice puffy vests, love where you live district. We haven't had any as a council and it used to look really smart going out to, you know, different things. And I would like to revive that and also have that available for our community because we are as strong as a team and sometimes teams wear uniforms. My comment. Miss Gru is writing that down, so I'm excited. Puffy vests, gray or, or navy black, I, I look very good in slim black. Okay, moving on. And, and then, and in, on the heels of the, the Silga series is the pivot discussion. And I, I thought that one of the most interesting things are communities that did the best or who had predicted some of the potential disasters. So I look at Taiwan and what they have done in terms of COVID and it's because they took the measures on the first round. What, where that brings for me is we had had a discuss of council about wildfires and things like generators and where we felt. I'm wondering if part of our final budget discussion, if we could revive, how do we be prepared even though people say we don't need it? But we need it. And when we're actually in the thick of it, we will be stronger because of it. After that particular talk, I was really struck. And there's a number of examples of communities where, you know, they took the precautions because they knew it was coming. And I think that those are our emergency preparedness and putting some money attached to that. So I wondered if we could just, I share that for next meetings.
So as, you know, when the power went out the other night, we were concerned about it as well. We do have a backup power in the budget for people not the best.
Yeah, I think that we need to bring that to the table for a future meeting for staff to discuss generator options. The problem is we have so many different points of infrastructure. How would, how would we do that would be specific, I'm assuming on a well one-two.
It should be well one-three.
One-two, three. Yeah, right, so, so that's part of it, but then there's the, you know, what else do you, what else is necessary?
You'd have your sewer system that you'd need to worry about, but certainly we can look into what would make the most sense. We have, we did in the past few years, but we could have new infrastructure. Council wants to direct us that.
If I remember correctly, and Counselor Taylor, it's your committee, but I think we talked about even starting to set up reserves to start budgeting for it. And so, anyway, just after that speed, after that talk, it's time. That's what I learned.
Okay, so we'll just put that on the next agenda for that committee. What committee is that on?
Finance, not.
Finance is on April 20.
Okay, does that make sense? Okay, let's do that, that's as a discussion point, not a staff report. Discussion.
It would be a discussion point of this.
Yeah, it's a little too early for that.
And that's all it was intended as, it was just, we're going into it and I just.
We've had the warning shot again.
That's how I feel, I feel.
Yeah. I, I think I've heard, I think I've actually heard the, you know, when we talked about generators, this is why we talked about generators, I, I think, I think a lot of people.
Push the conversation to the next. Anyway, that's my.
Well, it's hot or, or, you know, the lights are out, whatever. But it's interesting, I'll just circle back on your, your long thing there. FESBC, back to the firewood issue or the, the thing there. Forest Enhancement Society in partnership with Wellsbury Corporation, that Domtar, took 350 logging truck loads worth of fiber out of our community forest and shipped it to Domtar this winter instead of burning it.
Oh, wow.
So, so that would have been in our local air shed and that, and, and, you know, Forest Enhancement Society is running out of funding, et cetera, et cetera. Because their mandate is almost done and they have to grant a new funding. So there's, if you want to talk about advocacy states, there's one thing that we could continue to push forward is to have Forest Enhancement Society refunded so they can keep doing grants like that to make that economically viable.
So they will be actually speaking to council on April 20.
There you go, there's your primer.
So just on that, that's wonderful news. I'm, I'm, and I know it's private property, but it, there are significant burn piles and it. And it, it's, it, it, it really showcases how partnerships and community engagement could work.
So we are working on it, just.
Yeah. So I don't know if the fire chief took any photos when we send a letter to the province.
To the province?
Yeah, when we advocate for this. I didn't know if the fire chief took any photos.
I won't answer that.
Okay. No, and I don't know the answer either. So anyway, thank you for the.
That would require trespassing on private property. So at this particular point, no comment. Anyways, Counselor Taylor, do you have some things you'd like to talk about right now?
Uh, so I don't have any, any major updates. Um, I do want to thank Counselor Sim for her comments. I'm very much appreciated. Couldn't agree more and right back at you. And other than that, I'm, I've got my vaccination booked and I'm excited. Woo hoo. So glad that's coming. And I'm like bragging to all my colleagues at work about how we have this amazing opportunity for our community to get vaccinated together.
Yeah. Sure. You know, they're still talking about Canada-wide vaccination, vaccination will up until the end of June. And we, here we are, you know, mid of April in our entire town to be vaccinated. Though, you know, anecdotally hearing a lot about vaccination has to see out there, especially with AstraZeneca and the statistics on that. So I think a little bit of working cheerleading information needs to happen other world on that for sure. So thank you for all for your reports. And yes, Counselor Sim, thank you for stating that, uh, all of that. And yes, it's been a long, long year. Anyways, committee of the whole many minutes, minutes from the infrastructure committee of the whole meeting held March 2nd. There's a recommendation.
Recommendation that the minutes of the infrastructure committee of the whole meeting held that March 2nd be received.
Seconder. Thank you, Counselor Herring, all those in favor. Committee, the whole reports active, Counselor Frizzle.
Next meeting is May 18.
Thank you. Infrastructure Council, Sim.
Next meeting is June the 1st.
Parks and Rec. Well, I'll let Counselor Herring say that that was earlier today.
Yeah, that was earlier today and can we bring the recommendation forward? Is that how this works?
Recommendations go forward to the next council meeting.
Oh, okay. Yeah, but we did talk about dog parks and there will be a thing that hopefully attached to the April 19th. Sell one conversation about dog parks. Counselor Taylor, finance and audit.
Meeting is April 20th, next one.
Thank you. Standing committee reports, Counselor Herring, Joint Services.
Next meeting is May 10. And I have a recommendation that the minutes of the joint services committee held November 9th, 2020 and January 11th, 2021 be received.
Seconder. Counselor Taylor, seconds, all those in favor. Trails Task Force Committee, Counselor Taylor.
So our next meeting is April 14th, next Tuesday. And I have a recommendation that the minutes of the Trails Task Force held February 9th, 2021 be received.
Uh, seconder on that. Thank you, Counselor Herring, all those in favor. Passes. Do we still have pending news on that one, Miss Gru, Trails Task Force or is that out there publicly?
So right now, so we're still waiting for the grant application to be processed, but we will have a meeting potentially tomorrow afternoon at 4:30. That's how quickly it has to move. On site to look at the drawings with the trails committee.
This is for the River Trail bathroom?
No, this one is for the Raft River.
The Raft River one?
Yeah, because it has to be completed by December 31st. We haven't got the funding yet, but we've been moving forward on it to get it out as a tender package so that we're ready to go if we do get the funding. So the trails, uh, the tourism development, we are just waiting for the press release to come back from the province approved. They basically approved it, but.
Is that the River Trail one?
That's the River Trail and the 37 East, et cetera, et cetera.
Which is funny because I've already been asked for a reporter, so they already have that. So I.
Well, it's because they do their announcement with all the communities listed, but then if we want to do a press release, we, we specifically in our contract have to go back to them.
Gotcha.
For approval on what we say.
Okay.
So that's this morning it was sent. They like it. They're just going to be adding their new updated logo.
Okay, thank you. Excellent. So good progress and let's hope for the funding to be finalized on the the clear, the, the one by the Raft River elementary school. Junior Council.
Uh, we'll be having a meeting in fall, in the fall with the new more successful because we'll be back to.
Community economic development is also yours.
The next meeting is April 13.
Community representation reports, Tourism Wellsbury, Counselor Sim.
So the minutes are attached. I don't know if you've had a chance to look through the minutes or not.
Did a bit and actually had a question.
I'm hoping you do. Go ahead.
Anybody else have some questions and thoughts before I, till I find them again and remember what my question was? Yeah.
That's interesting. Yes, I will mention that tomorrow. So I can maybe help, tell me. Toda. Thompson, Open Up and Tourism Association.
Oh, so appointing somebody to the Economic Development Committee Task Force, was there a decision if it was guy or?
I think Ms. Gru would have the answer to that.
Your lawyers.
Sort of.
The question I had in regards to that, I believe that Ms. Selena had had a meeting with Ms. Gru and Ms. Madden. And one of the items that had been brought up at the last Tourism Wells Gray was around an events and sports coordinator position. Some of the members on the executive were quite keen on that. They felt that with the MRDT, they didn't necessarily get the value out of a sports coordinator, but they saw the value of doing events or destination type things. Um, Miss Gru, did that go anywhere or?
I was asked last week to ask council what their thoughts were on this.
Okay, so we have a meeting tomorrow. So I don't know if council has any thoughts on it. I actually brought that forward. I know that that's a surprise. I, I think that the intention was that around the sports coordinator, it was very successful. Lots of good feedback from the hotels and motels. It's worked out that there was a seasonal positive spin, but there was still another six months. This area is heavily dependent on an international tourism component. How do we build up more opportunities for community to come together, but also use that as a catalyst to attract local opportunities? And the mayor spoken about it and in fact, he coined it, I always forget, but you called it destination. Destination workshops. So, you know, learning to knit, crochet, sourdough bread, learn about different forests, things like maybe Ms. Neufeld might use some, using local experience that would be of interest to people and, and pulling that in. We do have a Trans Mountain that, you know, might also be coming. We've got a number of motels that aren't necessarily heavily utilized by different things. Is there a way to infill these same courses? Is there a way that our community could come together? But we need somebody to take it on. Um, and we need somebody who can actually rally that. And is that a use of the MRDT money? The management of that position would come under the District of Clearwater, very similar to the sports coordinator. Uh, I think we also have to look realistically moving forward. Um, you know, I noticed that the registration for minor hockey is down to 105. And what other arenas are going to be doing for, for sports coordinators? So is it time that we are ready to pivot and be ready for a next wave of opportunity? Council.
Thoughts on sports slash events coordinator, once this position comes back online because it's currently dormant. So.
Yeah, things like kayak festival, things, you know, music events, all that stuff would be nice to be supported as well.
Further thoughts?
I, I agree with everything said. Um, I like the idea of expanding it kind of beyond sports, but also on the sports side, maybe expanding into some sports that we don't have right now. Um, and, and yeah, would, would love to see this role filled again, like obviously we'd need to talk dollars.
Yep.
I have to say, um, but, uh, but I, I do like the idea of having this role in the kingdom.
I would, oh, go ahead, sir.
Activities and events too, so that it's kids, hockey.
Oh, that's a really, that's a great idea. I mean, that's basically what Counselor Sim was bringing up, both destination workshops and things like that. If he did that at the same time, we're doing hockey weekends. I, I'm sure we could stop a lot of binge eating, Timbits and other things. Yeah. Okay. So, uh, but yeah, that's, that's excellent. So for sure. Okay, good. I think that, I think you've got your answer that.
So I just want to make sure of protocol. So Ms. Gru, you've heard from council. Do I bring that up tomorrow at meeting or do I allow you to dialogue with Ms. Selena?
Well, you could bring it up.
Okay.
We would have to bring back a report to council on what that would look like and cost and maybe get flushed out a bit more from Tourism Wells Gray, but they would be prepared to provide as far as funding goes because they were putting in $12,000 a year towards the sports coordinator.
Yeah, my, my question will be for them tomorrow is I'm anticipating a number of pots of money coming forward for tourism catalyst money. And ideally this would be a way that if we've got a position that we're preempting, uh, that it might set us up for some other opportunities. And again, help the people in the upper Clearwater, for example, um, you know, making use of some of our, our local venues. So I think our community is just ready to embrace the next step. So I'm, I'm very excited by council's comments. Thank you.
Yeah, so council supports the idea.
Uh, the, the motion would only be to first have to bring back a report to council to outlining what this would look like in terms of financial perspective.
After you talk to Tourism Wells Gray.
Yeah. Yeah.
In a couple, yeah. Okay, good. So are we moving in second that motion or do we need to do that? Nope. Good. 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 Thank you. Next meeting. Thank you.
And to accept the minutes.
Okay, now I'm lost.
Mayor, did you have a question that you didn't?
Thank you.
It was page 49, 53. Did you have your?
My question was what, who had been appointed to the Economic Development Task Force.
Were there any questions on the MRDT timeline? Timeline is out now, so we will be meeting with Ms. Selena again to get it back on some sort of track. It has to go through the council, which is, um, not as complicated as trying to get it through the services committee and then the T N R D board.
I believe, Ms. Gru, you had also wanted some clarification on the deadlines and that there had been discussion that, uh, there had been an extension. Has that been confirmed?
That hasn't been confirmed.
Okay.
Extensions are good at this time. Okay, Fort Shew Working Group, Counselor Bamford is not there. There's a motion that the minutes of the Fort Shew Working Group, uh, being held on January 19, 2021 be received. Can I get a second or on that? Because I technically am moving that. So, seconded by Counselor Herring, we're going to go with that. All those in favor? Staff report, CAO report, once again, lots of pages. 58, 59, 60. Look at all that. Any questions of our CAO on the three pages there or staff for that matter, because some of it is finance and other things that Miss Shepherd looks after. It's nice to see the new staff. The, uh, they seem to be very cheerful and building as a team out there. Very happy to be here. Yay. Excellent. Okay. Moving on to 2020 annual water report. I think generally somebody's going to, would you like to speak to this? What Mr. Bear would usually, oh, public works.
Yeah, I'm manager of public works. Uh, last couple of years, we've had true consulting drafted for us, but Mr. Vazina did it this year. I reviewed it and there's a couple of changes just because we have added water lines. And the percentage of usage is going down, which is good. So that means we're either weeks or things are people using less water. It is a report that goes to interior health annually. It's a requirement. So council should be accepting it and then we forward it. And also post, there are people that actually read this report online.
Yeah. I had it as a legal requirement for my contract when I was working at parts that had to do this monthly and annually and posted online. Welcome to Walkerton and all the things that trickle down from that. So there is a recommendation that council accept the 2020 annual water report as presented April 6th, 2021, regular council meeting for distribution to interior health authority and to be posted on the district's website. So moved and seconded, moved by Counselor Taylor, seconded by Counselor Herring, because I didn't even look over this way. All those in favor. Riveting reading there, but essential. Bylaws has been taken care of. Which means we're moving on to correspondence. Response required. Item A, request for support laid off hotel and tourism industry workers from the city of newest minister. I'll just give you all a second to get to there. So, you know, back to the conversation about advocacy. Well, this is advocacy. You're, you're reading it here and all these items on the correspondence response required. And for information of, reading the letter, other than supporting newest mister's wishes there with Mr. Baines, I don't know how much of this actually applies to our local tourism scene. Because it's, we're sort of in a situation where it takes one person, there's one person that does all these jobs. And if you don't have this person, the jobs don't get done. So unless you're shut down, you know, not like it's, we're hiring back 75 to 100 of their local hotels here. So you know, how much of effect does this actually have locally? Like, do you want to write a letter of support for this? So Counselors Sim will go with that.
Well, I appreciate this. I think that there's going to be a number of, uh, items that will address this. You know, with the, with the premier, I found it interesting, you know, his comment was, well, nobody can be evicted yet. I didn't find that to be a particularly helpful comment. But I think it's got to be difficult being premier during a pandemic. I think what I would really, if there was a point of advocacy, it was be that the provincial government try and follow the lead of the UK, which is following a roadmap of what we can expect. It is absolutely impossible to address laid off workers and what the future is without a plan moving forward. And even to have benchmarks about where decisions would be made, that also would be very, very helpful. And the other point of advocacy would be that, you know, looking at reparations, because there are industries that have done very, very well. And there's other industries in order to try and support the, um, the province in being healthy that have had catastrophic, uh, financial impacts. And that to me is the advocacy is how do you make this somewhat equitable? Because we're, we're, it's a big divide. So this letter, although the intentions I think are very, very good, I think that there are deeper, um, points that could be advocated if council wanted to do so.
Further comments? Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree. I think it's deeper and broader. Uh, I, I think it'd be hard to single out one industry. I think, you know, multiple industries are impacted. And I think it's that, you know, what's a broader recovery roadmap. So, yeah, I would agree.
Further comments? Somebody want to make a motion to receive? Grateful. Thank you. Help cities lead. Oh, we had this. Uh, District of North Vancouver and City of Victoria both pitching in here. Counselor Herring.
This is North America wide is what they're looking at. So it'd be United States and Canada. Specific to the two, so this is issue only, as the mayor was alluding to, it's not. Nine-one-one is for all emergencies. This is for specific to, I think, I thought I read. Yeah, overdose as well as, yeah.
So the discussion is, I think, that we absolutely need it. I'm wondering if this line in our endorsement of it is also just a go-to to help people be referred to resources. One of the concerns that's been highlighted through the pandemic is that people, when they're laid off, or they lose access to resources that would otherwise help them. And then where are they left with? So to me, this, this is an opportunity to maybe connect people who are feeling vulnerable and on the edge to things and being in that preemptive step as opposed to using it when they're at the very end of their road.
Next one. B C, oh, well, yeah, I guess we, we don't, okay, all those in favor? Because we moved in second, because we are supporting it. Okay, so the next one actually has a bit more of a spelled out recommendation, which is, I lost spell, I'm cheating. Oh, Bill Kara is added on to the spelling sheet. That's where I'm lost here. Okay, so the B C Association of Farmers Market, so there is a recommendation that a letter thanking the Honorable Adrian Dix, Minister of Health for the Ministry's, Ministry of Health, continued support of B C's Farmers Market Nutritional Coupon Program. Thoughts? So this is a good program. I mean, I'm a little bit jaded, because I hear about it all the time. But it is really targeted at people who generally can't afford fresh food, to go use coupons to get fresh food at our farmers market. So it supports local producers and growers, and it targets fresh produce at people that really need to have. And I think it's a good part of solution to a problem that does exist in this community is very well taken care of.
I mean, the fact that seven thousand eight hundred dollars was directly invested in the community, clearly, that needs that.
Yeah.
So two thousand nineteen was ten thousand, so you can tell that COVID obviously affected coupons, and yet, if you think about it from that perspective, I would say it was used more last year in the sense of how many people would have had to.
It does, it does, especially when you factor in discussions that we've had anecdotally with food banks about how much their demand is down last year, and that's because so many people aren't served, they can afford to go buy their own groceries. But it also shows that if seven thousand plus dollars worth of coupons were being used in this community, they were being used by people that were at high risk beyond the value that serve could provide to them. So, yeah, I think once we get past Serb, I think that seven thousand number is going to look awfully low. So there is a recommendation, or we moved it, thank you, Councilor. So we'll do that. So recommendation, so moving on to item E. You want to say, would you second that one? Because it's a formal letter. Okay, second or on that one, somebody? Thank you. All those in favor? Fully discussed. Thank you. Counselor Taylor was the second or on that. So request for consideration of support of resolution invasive Asian clams from Sicamous. I generally like clams, but apparently these ones aren't good. They're coming in on boats that are not properly being cleaned from other jurisdictions that have an issue. It's a big deal, but it doesn't, I don't know if it necessarily affects us. We have the tie-in locally, other than to say, thank you for your letter, Sicamous. We agree with you, Counselor Seven. So move to write a letter of support. Is that what we're doing? Second or? Okay, all those in favor? Seconded by Council Herring. Okay, we're doing advocacy. U B C M Membership Renewal. I think this was a fairly easy one. There's a recommendation that Council approves the renewal of the U B C M two thousand and twenty-one annual membership in the amount of one thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars and two cents. Seconded by Counselor Taylor, all those in favor? U B C M two thousand and twenty-one excellent award program. Anything we want to throw at them? Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Yep, sure. We can take a pass this year. So there's no recommendations. Moving on to correspondence information items, if there's something you'd like to speak to in the rest of this stuff.
There was two things that I thought could have been highlighted, but then when you reread their definitions, because it has to tie, like our Healthy Living Program, for example, doesn't necessarily tie into our O C P so on. So then I thought about the Excellence Sustainability, which we did present at the U B C M a couple of years ago. Again, that has to tie, when you go to the depth die, it's supposed to be tying into your policies, and we don't specifically have policies.
So U B C M wants us to do more work before we qualify for great things that we do. So we'll just skip the U B C M things. Thank you. Moving on to correspondence items, if you has anything you'd like to talk about here, just wave your hands. Go ahead, Counselor Herring. One building permit with zero value. That's interesting. Nobody ever asked questions. Well, we, we make comments on this one. Yeah.
So we, we have a few houses coming on board. Evergreen Acres is coming on, Canco. Will get reported in March likely, because they've just paid their D C Cs today. So there's actually going to be quite a bit coming on, be more than last year. He is doing stuff, and we're also working on hopefully a program potentially with True for Trades in Clearwater. To bring trades and to build a house.
Instruction trades.
Yeah, a residential instruction program.
Don't tell your fire insurance company about that. Brenda Renewables Project at the former Brenda Mine site, interesting for sure. Proposed Lower Mainland L G M A Resolutions, V C P Rail and Golden Year's Business Park. Cup W. Press for Support Delivering Community Power. C N announces Cyrus Porter as the new Vice President. I had to read that nameable five times before I realized that that was an actual name. Interested Party Submission, Prince George Re Street Lightning Rate Application. That's an interesting one to read, because it sounds like B C Hydro is charging more. What's the rate increase? Do we know that?
But on the good news side of it, there's going to be four different lights that Mr. Vazina was working on with Mr. Von Hall in here in Clearwater. And so we're going to be inviting Council out an evening session to take a look, because there's bright lower, so the lower would be on the street, and then the bright one would be in intersection. And those are the LEDs, so we're just testing for over right now. So I'll give you a date soon as I have one and invite you out to check it out.
Yeah, that's a good one to get out public. I'm hearing there's all sorts of different versions here, some with less or more sideways light pollution, which is kind of fun as well, so. Mr. Mystery of Municipal Tares, Regional Update from February two thousand and twenty-one. Raft Greenhouse Gas Offset Protocol, Forest Carbon and Silga Community Excellent Awards Winners. It's all of our letters. No notices of motion, no other business. I don't think we have any public online to comment. We'll just go with that, unless there's anything in the chat saying anything. And then we have an in camera, so recommendation that we move into in camera, that the meeting be close to the public pursuant to sections ninety-one A C I of the Community Charter to discuss matters relating to personal information about an identifiable individual who holds or is being considered for position as an officer, employment or agent of municipality or other position appointed by the municipality, labor relations or other relations, employee relation that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. Can I get a second or on that? Favor? Thank you. And you're going to take a five minute recess, ten minute recess. I'll see you back at three fifteen, and we'll go into a camera forum. Bathroom break, and I'll get a fresh coffee.